Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Griffin.
Here.
Bishop. Commwell. Gray. Hairston. Harsh. House Jones. Jones. Casey. Kelly. Moore. Polensik. Santana. Slyf. Spencer. Starr. Welch. You have four, Mr. President.
Okay, will everyone please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll make the following statement. This meeting of Cleveland City Council is a lawful meeting. Under Section 605.04 of the Codified Ordinances, no person with purpose to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting shall do any act which obstructs or interferes with the due conduct of such meeting. Members of the public are invited to speak only under the rules set by this council. Disruptions, including but not limited to speaking out of turn and making loud noises and loud utterances, are in violation of the rules and interfere with the due conduct of this lawful meeting. Such disruptions may constitute a misdemeanor and a violation of Section 605.04. Anyone who disrupts this lawful meeting in violation of the Codified Ordinances commits misdemeanors and is subject to prosecution. The following is the first and only warning. If this meeting is disrupted, I will gavel a halt to the proceedings and directly assembled officers to escort any person participating in the disruption out of the chamber. Once persons participating in the disruption are outside of the chambers, the officers will close the doors and the disruptors will be handled as directed by the Director of Public Safety. The council proceedings will not begin again until those that participated in the disruption have left the chamber and the chamber doors are closed. Disruptors will not be allowed back in the chamber after the meeting resumes. Again, this is the first and only warning. Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Spencer, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the Journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Polensik.
Thank you. We will now move to public comment. I will ask all councilmembers to acknowledge the speakers by turning around, and then I will ask all of the speakers to make sure that you acknowledge your time. First and foremost, we have Sabrina Otis. Sabrina Otis is from Cleveland. She's here to talk about the District Policing Committee partnering with council and administration to correct, the correct way. She is not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone. Ms. Otis, you had to.
No, I'm afraid I'm gonna trip. I'm a big person on the phone. Yeah, y'all trying to kill me. Y'all want to kill me, I see. Good evening, council, council president, mayor, and administration. So I am First District's policing co-chair. We have a problem. I don't really know where it lies, but if y'all don't get it together, we gonna have bigger problems. So let me explain something. Our DPCs should have bylaws or have them, I don't know, but First District has some, and they're not being followed. We have issues with community relations where our community relations representative refuses to talk to the co-chair because she and her feelings. For one year and two months, I've written and asked y'all to deal with her. And for one year and two months, no one has dealt with her. I am tired of going to meetings and having her stand up and tell the residents of First District that I personally am stopping paying for a police awards dinner. That ain't my job. It's not in our bylaws. And if it was, you would amend the bylaws and put the onus on us to pay for these dinners. It's not in writing. Who came up with it? You can't have residents vote for something when you don't have the legal authority to amend a bylaw. I am tired. I am tired of asking people to do their job. If I was an employer of the city of Cleveland, you would have fired me. I'm a black woman, you would have fired me. I see it all the time on TV, black women working for the city being fired for foolishness. I am tired. We in the community do the most. We come up with the best ideals. We get out there and talk to people on y'all behalf. We defend this city. You have outsiders coming in, we protect this city. We get on the phone, we call, and we remind people what's going on in the city. See, the residents of this city are the eyes and the ears, and we continually being disrespected. Yes, it's a volunteer position. I do it with pride. I won't be stepping down. That's why when we had our recent election, I won again. I am good at what I do. I can do it in my sleep. You never seen my resume because I'm not giving it to you, because if I do, I'd shine some of y'all. I am tired. The DPC co-chairs, the treasurers, we need to be respected. We need to be at the table. We understand that the mayor may have an agenda, and that's great, but mayor, we would like to be on that agenda. When you guys are hosting events to plan, our bylaws say we supposed to be at the table. We're not at the table. We need to be at the table. We are the reason why y'all look good. Respect us and thank us. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Armstrong from Ward 15 to talk about how Form-based Code eliminates tree preservation plans and allows new parking lots on got cut offs. He is not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone.
Good evening, Council President Griffin. Thank you for the opportunity to share public comments about Form-Based Code. I've learned this new code allows an administrator to approve commercial parking lots in residential neighborhoods and eliminates Title VII tree preservation requirements. Ordinance 347224, or FBC zoning Title VII-A, was passed by City Council last year, now in effect in parts of Slavic Village, Huff, Detroit Shoreway, and in the Caddell Neighborhood where I reside. FBC was pitched by the administration as providing more equitable options in housing, transportation, and a reduced reliance on cars. On H, on a 1.24 acre site in my neighborhood, a commercial medical establishment is constructing an addition on their Detroit Avenue parcel that is in a UX3 mixed-use zoning district. No problem. However, with only an FBC administrator's approval, they also are allowing them to situate their new 14 to 23 space parking lot on their sites to other parcels that are between two homes on a side street in a residential H4 district. This administrative authority bypasses the Planning Commission, but while one concern, while researching all this, I could not find any evidence of tree preservation plan submission. Even though FBC Chapter 3001 says this code is intended to balance conservation and development by promoting the preservation and enhancement of the city's tree canopy, there are no specific references in Title VII-A to the Title VII tree preservation requirements found in Chapter 341, 50, 1.51, 52, and 53. They're eliminated. Tree preservation is not required in Form-Based Code neighborhoods. According to an Axios article earlier this month, Mayor Bibb says he wants to expand this Form-Based Code citywide by 2027. This suggests all our city's tree preservation requirements could soon be eliminated. While imperfect, these protections approved in 2018 by City Council help preserve and save mature trees in my neighborhood of Caddell Commons in the former Caddell Orchard. With more large developments coming to our FBC neighborhoods, it's imperative FBC be fixed now, well before it's expanded citywide. I'll send you details by email tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Samaria Rice. Samaria Rice is from Ward 15. She's here to talk about the topic of Tamir. She's representing the Tamir Rice Foundation, and she's not being paid by anyone. Ms. Rice.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers, Administration. I just wanted to give a warm thank you to Ms. Spencer for assisting us with the historical landmark and allowing us to present it in front of the committee with Jasmine Santana, Mr. Harsh, Councilwoman Hairston, Councilwoman House was in there, and Councilwoman Welch. So thank you all for allowing us to present that presentation. As I said before, that is a memory that I have of my son, and although it's not accountability, but it's acknowledgement and it's acceptance for what Cleveland has done to my family. So, and I just wanted to be able to say that, and thank you, Ms. Spencer, so much. I also wanted to bring up the gas station. Mr. Kelly, Councilwoman Kelly, I'm gonna need you to table it, okay? Please. Heard from someone in the administration that it was going to be a gas, a fire station. I hope that's still the plan for it to be a fire station is very deserving in that community, and we would love to have a fire station over there instead of a gas station. We kind of know what type of negative effects that it brings to the community, and it's such a residential community and family-oriented community, so I hope you all are able to figure out what that looks like. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure I said that, Councilman. You know Kelly. Kelly, and if you all know I'm doing Tamir's 11th anniversary this year, we're doing a production, a community response directed by Terrence Spivey. If you all are interested, please see all the details on Eventbrite. I'm almost done with the building, so hopefully this last fundraiser, maybe one more, after we'll be able to wrap everything up and have it open next year, okay? So I just wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you. Next, we have Bridget Smith Jackson. She's from East Cleveland. She's here to talk about housing, not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by acknowledging Mayor Bibb and his administration for their responsiveness. This upcoming, well, this past Wednesday, they held the event for the families and provided them with an update, and so I want to say thank you for the responsiveness. It is very heart, it's heart wrenching that we had to come so many times to get a response, and I pray that going forward, that's not the case for others. I also want to acknowledge Councilwoman Richard Starr. If you know me and if you know us, me and him fight a lot, a whole lot, because I'm closer to the ground with the people, and I understand his office and his position, but sometimes we gotta fight. And so I want you to know, at no point has ever been, he wasn't aware that we was coming, but we felt the need to come. We seen his letter, we seen him write his letter, but we didn't see support. We didn't see support, and we felt like he was on island by yourself. So at no point was our visit to this chamber ever been about attacking you. Quite the opposite. Our presence here is a direct extension of the work you have already done. This fight has been waging for years, often alone, for the dignity of not only Ward 5, but for Cleveland as a whole. Let me be clear, Councilwoman Starr's advocacy has never been confined to Ward 5. Time and time again, he has stood before this body in committee meetings at this very podium and behind closed doors, speaking up on the issues that plague our neighborhood citywide. Whether it was the housing crisis, public safety, youth programming, or infrastructure inequalities, I'm sorry, inequities, he has consistently used his voice to demand accountability and solutions that benefit the entire city of Cleveland. Yet when tragedy struck Ward 5, we did not see the same energy from this body or the same compassion that Councilwoman Starr shows up with. Even after he publicly called upon the mayor for answers, it was silence. And if there was, if someone spoke, I didn't see it, so I do apologize. But for what I seen, what I noticed, it was silence. And that lets us know, in my opinion, silence is complicity. This is, again, not a Ward 5 problem. This is a city of Cleveland problem. I know that there is families who moved to Ward, what is that, 18? What's going on there? Ward 8, but it's 10, whatever y'all got going, that are currently going through those same things as we speak. My email was responded to before the residents' email was responded to. That is unacceptable. I go home and I go to bed at night, I'm able to do the things I need to do within my home. Those residents, no matter how they fight, how they use their voice, they are ignored. Again, this is not a Ward 5 problem. This is a city of Cleveland problem, and we have to do something to address that. I also want to share an example really quick. A few months ago, a young lady that was bullied out of Ward 5, and she ended up moving in Ward 7, her unit, the unit above her caught fire. She caught me.
Ms. Jackson? Time is up. Thank you. Next, we have Faouzi Bedour. Faouzi Bedour is from Ward 11. He's here to talk about 10022 Madison Avenue. He's representing a Coalition for a Better Cleveland, and he's not being paid by anyone, Mr. Bedour.
Good evening, Council, Council President, Mayor Bibb. Thanks God you're here, Mayor Bibb. Okay, I'll, before I start, I need, this is my, would be my last speech before, for this council, in any, at any time, in any way, any comment took, somebody took it for as offensive, I apologize for it to Danny, to Hairston, to anybody. Didn't mean that all comments that we come up with, it is meant that situation, the subject that we're talking about, not the person. As persons, every person, we have the utmost respect for everyone. Actually, we come to this council because we believe you are the guardians of public interest. So I apologize for any, Danny. 2013, when your former colleague Donna Brady helped zone 10022 Madison Avenue as pedestrian overlay, at the same time, the city of Cleveland decided to shrink Madison Avenue from West Boulevard to West 85th by two feet, one foot from each side to widen the tree loans. I was in those meetings with your former colleagues, Matt Zone. Over my objection, I told him that if they shrink Madison, it won't be bike friendly. They said, yes, it will, and Mike Zone supported me in that. After they finished the renovation, as they call it, they said, okay, and nine people got hit from West Boulevard, and nine bikers got hit by cars, three at that same location. And from nine, from West Boulevard to West 85th, nine people got hit in like mere of two or three months, then they said that that section of Madison Avenue is not bike friendly. So with Madison is actually closer to side streets size than Main Street size, and West Boulevard with all the curves and West Boulevard, they can't be fixing, Anthony, it can't be straight. So, I mean, how can a gas station be built in that location? There was gas station forty years ago. It didn't make it. They didn't even survive. And the owner of that gas station was, sold the FBI bags of books of food stamps. That's how he did to survive. That location is not, cannot put gas station, it will not survive. Business, business.
Mr. Bedour?
Done?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bedour.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Stephanie K. Thomas, Ward 11. She's here to talk about the gas station on West Boulevard. She represents Shelter to People Cleveland. She's not being paid by anyone. Is Stephanie K. Thomas? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to hear about that. Next, we have Austria Everson from Buckeye Woodhill. The topic that she's here to talk about is love. She represents the Love Project Movement, and she's not being paid by anyone. Ms. Everson.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So, like I told y'all before, every Friday, Saturday night, we go out in our communities. And this past Saturday night, we were on our way to the clubhouse when we witnessed a man run the red light from East 116th and smack into this parked car of a father and a son. So we immediately pull over, we jump out the car, we make sure that everybody's okay. And what do I do? I call the police because we continue to be advised that that's what we should do, right? When we see an incident like this, we're supposed to call the police. So I called the police, I called EMS, and I let them know, hey, this is what happened. We suspect this guy to be drunk, the one that ran the light. We witnessed it, we need someone to come out here. Of course, EMS comes first and fire, and they come and basically state that, you know, this is a police matter and that there's nothing really they can do. This is just a minor traffic stop, and the police probably won't even come, so you guys could just drive yourselves to Fourth District. And we said, wait, 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 sir. This man, we think he's drunk. Like, you're not gonna do a breathalyzer, you're not gonna do anything like that? No, nope, there's nothing we can do, and I, you know, the police aren't gonna come. So we're like, okay, so you sure there's nothing you could do? Okay, well, we can exercise our rights to do a citizen's arrest, because we watched this man, and we believe that he's drunk based off of the behavior that he's showing us. And if you're not going to do anything, and you're telling me that the police are not gonna do anything, then that means whose job is it? The communities, right? So we began to read this man his rights, give him notice that we are giving him a citizen's arrest. So then this captain begins to block us and tell us that this is not our job. This is a police matter, and he's gonna have the police hurry up. We said, please do. We will sit here and wait. When the police arrived, their focus was on us, New Era Cleveland, not the man that just smacked into this father and son, right? Because this is just what happens here. And the police let that man go, get back in his car and drive off. No breathalyzer, no nothing, but they continue to question us. Why do we continue to write, get into contracts with them every single year when they are not benefiting the community? The majority of the time, community needs them, they are not sufficient to address the issue. Why is the police the only option for public safety? I thought this was American, we couldn't have monopolies. Why do we continue to be targeted just for caring about our people but being told by the captain that there's nothing the police can do, but it's not our job? Let me tell you now, I will never call the police again. We, community, will figure out how to address these issues. Please don't ever tell us to call them again.
Thank you, Ms. Everson. Thank you, Ms. Everson. Thank you. Next, we have Chairman Fahim. He's from Buckeye Woodhill. He's here to talk about COINTELPRO 2.0. He represents New Era, and he's not being paid by anyone. Chairman Fahim.
Thank you. Good evening, council. How y'all doing? Justin. Mark. Wayne, I don't know if he's here or not. Dorothy Todd, I don't know if she's here or not. But the counterintelligence program was a program that was secret and illegal, and it was launched by the FBI between 1956 and 1971. Now, the premise of this program right here was to, was designed to surveil, infiltrate, discredit, and disrupt political and social movements that the United States government viewed as subversive. Now, some of these strategies included surveillance and wiretapping, smear campaigns, psychological warfare, undermining coalitions, infiltration and internal discord, false letters and forged communications, disrupting community programs, violent raids and arrests, and media manipulation. So five days after the boycott of race fuel for safety concerns, Fox 8, Peggy Galick specifically, airs a news story with a man that is claiming to be the owner of the gas station, who in fact is a police informant and was the state's main witness in our case, that alleges that we held these gas station employees hostage for three hours. Now, upon doing our research, this man has a very extensive criminal record, including being convicted of raping a 12-year-old girl and since the 36 years, but was somehow released based on a medical technicality maybe five or six years into that sentence. Also, this man has attempted to allegedly impregnate his own daughter. There's a police report dating back to 2018, as well as this man has been convicted of impersonating a US Marshal, robbing drug dealers, insurance fraud, and a long list of other stuff, right? And so my thing when it comes to the use of police informants, right? And this is why we're gonna dismantle this entire police department and restructure this. We're gonna completely reimagine public safety in general. The state brought this man up to the witness stand, and he claims that his house was burned down, and he was awarded a million dollars from an insurance fraud. This man also claims that he didn't work for the gas station. He was part owner and received no payment in a five-year spending time from this gas station. And we're gonna continue the conversation next week about police informants. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Juan Calado Diaz from Ward 11. He's here to talk about crime in Cleveland. He's here to talk about crime in Cleveland. He's representing inquisitory media, and he is not being paid by anyone. Is Mr. Calado Diaz here? Mr. Calado Diaz? I do not see Ms. Calado Diaz, therefore, we'll move on. Thank you so much. That ends public comment. Madam Clerk, sharing the appointments.
File number 1344-2025, from Mayor's Appointments Committee, recommending approval of the mayor's appointment of Anthony R. Whitfield to the City Planning Commission, six-year term ending October 10, 2031. Without objection, the appointment is approved. File number 1345-2025, from Mayor's Appointments Committee, recommending approval of the mayor's appointment of Chanel Smith-Wiggum to the Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority Board. New appointment term ending March 2027. Without objection, the appointment is approved. File number 1346-2025, from Mayor's Appointments Committee, recommending approval of the mayor's appointment of Michelle Anderson to the Landmark Commission. Reappointment term ending August 1, 2029. Without objection, the appointment is approved. File number 1347-2025, from Mayor's Appointments Committee, recommending approval of the mayor's appointment of Robert Strickland to the Landmark Commission. Reappointment term ending August 1, 2029. Without objection, the appointment is approved. File number 1348-2025, from the Mayor's Appointments Committee, recommending approval of the mayor's appointment of Raymond Tarasuk Jr. to the Landmark Commission. Reappointment term ending August 1, 2029. Without objection, the appointment is approved. File number 1349-2025, from the Mayor's Appointments Committee, recommending approval of the mayor's appointment of Julie Trot to the Landmark Commission. Reappointment term ending August 1, 2029. Without objection, the appointment is approved.
Thank you. For this segment, and Councilman Conwell and Councilman Harsh, I would like to ask for your attention for a moment. For this segment, I would like to ask for a special condolence resolution, and I'm going to ask if all council members, all staff members, and also if the mayor was so obliged with he and his cabinet, if we can all stand for a moment of silence for Thank you. I'll make a couple of comments. Mr. Dryer was an ultimate professional. And Mr. Dryer fell ill a month or two ago. And Mr. Dryer is the person who you used to see right here to my right, many of your left. And he was a historian of Cleveland City Council. He was one of the best public servants to ever serve this city. He was, he always had professionalism. He did his job with integrity, honesty, and tenacity. He knew more about the institution of council and how things were supposed to move more than anybody I have ever met in this body. Mr. Dryer never complained about his job. Mr. Dryer always embraced the job. Whether you had a challenge, he was always there to be able to help. And he never got caught up in the politics. He always just focused on keeping the trains moving, to make sure that council followed its own rules, and that council continued to have our business and do our business in a very professional and expedited way. He'll truly be missed. We had a chance to talk with his brother today. His brother is a municipal, a retired municipal court judge in Indianapolis, and I hope he's watching right now to let him know how much we all appreciate Mr. Dryer. I know the mayor reached out to me to extend his condolences once he found out many of the cabinet members and all of the council members, but most importantly, the staff of Cleveland City Council. Work closely with Allen every day. When you lose someone who you spend more time with than sometimes your own family, it really resonates. And it resonated with me, and it resonated with all the council. A lot of people get accolades that are elected officials, that are dignitaries and other things, but people like Allen was just as important to the ecosystem of us getting things done in the Cleveland City Council. So, on behalf of all of us, I hope his family is watching. I know that all of the council presidents that I could relate to since 2000, I sent a message, and all of them have extended their condolences because Allen was just a heck of a guy. He had a very great sense of humor, and he was just an awesome person. I know that many people want to acknowledge him. There will be a memorial service for Allen sometime after the election and before Thanksgiving per his brother and his family, and former council president Jay Westbrook, who was very close with Allen and actually was a partner with Allen through his entire career. So, I thank everybody for acknowledging my friend, our coworker, and just a tremendous individual and an outstanding public servant. If we could, let's give a round of applause to Allen. Job won't do. Job well done, Allen. Job well done. Job well done. Are there any other condolence resolutions? Any other condolence resolutions? Okay?
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmember House Jones for George Hood, by Councilmember Griffin for Sister Matilda Jeanette Goins, by Councilmember Griffin for Marvin William Reed, by Councilmember Jones for Betty Jean Spragan, for Council, by Councilmember Hairston for Jahari Stiegel.
Thank you. Are there any other condolence resolutions? Once again, will council members please rise for a moment of silence? Oh, Councilman Joseph Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I rise to ask to take out a number for Mr. Drew Chilius. Mr. Drew Chilius has been a advocate for our neighborhood, Jesus, for as long as I can remember being alive on the planet. And his commitment and his dedication to our neighborhood is legendary. He fought to make sure that we didn't have certain particular type housing in our community. He fought at a time when our neighborhood and certain areas didn't have sidewalks, did not have curbs, did not, had no streets. This is how far he goes back in our community. And so, his passing will be a loss to humanity. And so, I just stand in respect to ask that you put out a number for him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Michael Palensik.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, please hold out a number for Maurice Ford.
So noted. Thank you. Are there any other condolence resolutions? Once again, will all council members please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any congratulatory resolutions?
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmember Palensik for Father Anthony Simone, by Councilmember Starr for the Golden Cypher's on their 25th anniversary, by Councilmember Griffin for Clara Lee Kling scales Parker, by Councilmember Griffin for Patricia Nguyen on her retirement. Resolutions of recognition by Councilman Conwell for Lee Memorial AME Church, by Councilmember Casey for Chris Bean, by Councilmember Casey for Carmen Farley, by Councilmember Casey for Alex Kowalski, by Councilmember Casey for Brennan Eggers.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Wait.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to presentations, and if we could open up the well for Councilman Casey, he has a group that he would like to acknowledge. Which side would they like to come in? Where are they, his group? Please come on in. And if my colleagues can open up the well and invite Councilman Casey's guests in.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the month of October is Down Syndrome Awareness Month across the U.S. And since 2015, we've been recognizing individuals with developmental disabilities, more specifically Down Syndrome. And October 12th is Down Syndrome Day in the city of Cleveland. And this year, we were able to expand a mural on the west side by 161st and Puritus. And that mural is a more alike-than-different mural. And that mural is, after we finished this year, is 5,000 square feet, which is a mural that is the largest mural dedicated to individuals with developmental disabilities in the United States. We actually were able to surpass one that's in Texas. We are trying to get funds to continue that wall, Councilman's life, we're heading into it, we're crossing the line there. And when we're done with that wall, it will be the largest mural in the world dedicated to individuals with developmental disabilities. And this more alike-than-different mural is a mural that if you go by it, it looks almost the same as it's a flower, it's a flowered wall mural, but every single flower in there is a different flower. And this year, what we did is we added faces to the mural so that we can bring the difference to life with individuals. But there's an organization, the Down Syndrome Association of Northeast Ohio, which we just celebrated the 25th anniversary of the Buddy Walk, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. And that organization has been an organization that is a voice for individuals who are not that articulate and advocating for themselves. But we have four individuals here today who are members of the Down Syndrome Association of Northeast Ohio's Self Advocate Presentation Board, which was established to advance health care for people with Down Syndrome by preparing self advocates to share their personal health care stories with medical students and professionals, helping to foster a more compassionate and informed approach to patient care throughout Northeast Ohio. Each member of this dedicated board transforms personal experiences into educational opportunities by helping shape a future where individuals with Down Syndrome receive the understanding, respect, and medical care they deserve. And these four individuals, I'm going to tell you just a little bit about each one, and if you guys want to say something, you're more than welcome. Some of them will, some of them won't. Brennan Eggers, a bright and kind-hearted 15-year-old ninth grader at Berea Mid Park High School. It's a beloved member of our community whose kindness, joy, and enthusiasm are an inspiration to all who know him. Brennan cherishes his family, parents Jeff and Bonnie, and younger brother Adam, as well as his loyal dog Elsa, and finds joy in simple yet profound moments like hiking together in local parks. Brennan shines both in spirit and action, participating in swimming, playing baseball with the Medina Miracle League's Cardinal team, and sharing strength and friendship while exercising at Gigi's Playhouse. Whereas Brennan is also an active member of the Time to Thrive class at DeSanio, and brings his warm heart and love for meeting new people and dogs to every experience. Brennan's vibrant presence, compassion, and community spirit serves a powerful reminder of the joy found in connection, inclusion, and the everyday courage to be yourself. So, Brennan, come on up here and grab your recognition. I feel like I've almost known you your whole life. Alex Kowalski is a dedicated and hardworking individual who has contributed his talents to Planet Fitness and now Sunburst Snacks. He's an avid basketball fan and an active community member who generously volunteers his time with youth ability, supporting and inspiring young people in our city. Alex values strong personal relationships and enjoys spending meaningful time with his family, his best friends, and his girlfriend, Carmen. And Alex, what are you known for? Show me.
Um, yes.
No.
Yes.
Show me the money. Alex, Alex Kowalski. Alex, do you want to say anything?
So, because I wanted to, I just should probably just off, because this is about you guys. I said, I said, I said this, thank you so much for coming for, I'm a reporter, dumb to set my trumpets for then, and then, oh my God. I said, I said, I love my mom, my dad, you know, my, I love you more, you're in my heart, because I'm, I'm your dad. I went and born, I had a baby for a event on for the, I'm surprised me so much.
Thank you, Alex. Chris Bean exemplifies the leadership, creativity, and perseverance that defines his initiative. He is a graduate of Mennar High School, a multi-gold medalist in Special Olympics golf, a gifted artist known for his distinctive yarn stitching, and a passionate advocate for improving health care access for individuals with disabilities. Throughout his advocacy and participation on the Self Advocate Presentation Board, Chris has helped advance a message of dignity, equality, and empowerment for people with Down Syndrome throughout Northeast Ohio.
This is the first time for me being in City Hall. I just want to say I'm really proud of getting this award. I actually got to meet Baker Mayfield, but unfortunately, he's on the Bucks. But I just want to say, Baker Mayfield, please come back.
Good job, Chris. Man after my own heart. Carmen Isabel Farley exemplifies the spirit of independence, kindness, and perseverance that defies the Self Advocacy Presentation Board. Carmen lives at home with her parents and her beloved dog Addie. She's a proud graduate of North Royalton High School, class of 2019, and attends the PAL's Day Program in Strongsville four days a week. For the past nine years, Carmen has worked at Augie's Pizza in North Royalton, where she contributes her energy and enthusiasm to food preparation, salad making, and helping wherever she is needed. Carmen's life is filled with joy, friendship, and community involvement. She enjoys spending time with her friends, singing and dancing, and participating in empower sports, improveneers, and her real-life Christian group. Carmen treasures time with her family, especially Sunday dinners, and game nights with her parents and sister Miranda, who is currently studying medicine at Ohio University in Cleveland. Carmen's compassion, hard work, and positive outlook embody the values celebrated during Down Syndrome Awareness Month, reminding us of the strength and beauty of inclusion in our community. Congratulations, Carmen.
I just want to say, thank you. And I do love my mom and dad way too much.
Way too much.
And I do love-
And I do love my dog, too. You know, so that guy, too.
Gentlemen and ladies, be it resolved that members of Cleveland City Council do hereby recognize and honor all four of you and the Down Syndrome Association of Northeast Ohio, your self advocacy, the Self Advocacy Presentation Board for their exemplary, extraordinary commitment to advocacy, education, and inclusion during Down Syndrome Awareness Month and throughout the year. On behalf of Cleveland City Council, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Outstanding, outstanding. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, first reading emergency ordinances referred for administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance 1315-2025 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Finance to enter into an amendment to a contract with the Child Care Resource Center of Cuyahoga County for additional funds for 18 eligible households to continue to provide funding for early childhood education for the Department of Finance. Ordinance 1316-2025 by Councilmembers Starr, Bishop Harrison, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Parks and Recreation to execute a deed of easement granting to Cedar Redevelopment Phase IV LLC. Certain easement rights in property located on East 26th Street between Central Avenue and Community College Avenue and declaring the easement rights no longer needed for public use. Ordinance 1317-2025 by Councilmembers Slyf and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Port Control to employ one or more professional consultants to provide financial and accounting consulting services for a period of one year with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Port Control. Ordinance 1321-2025 by Councilmember Slyf, designating Old John Marshall High School Building as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1325-2025 by Mayor Bibb, authorizing the mayor and the directors of Law, Parks, and Rec, Port Control, and/or the Office of Capital Projects as appropriate, to enter into one or more agreements and/or amendments to the lease by way of concession with the Browns or their designees to effectuate the terms and conditions in the settlement term sheet regarding the relocation of the Cleveland Browns to the city of Brook Park and the demolition of Huntington Bank Field, determining the method of making the public improvement of designing and performing demolition and site preparation of such sports facilities and other structures, and designing and constructing various lakefront improvements, authorizing other professional service contracts, accepting gifts and grants, and establishing the Community Benefits Project and the Lakefront Development Subfunds. Ordinance 1350-2025 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts for the purchase lease or lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles, apparatus and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment and other aftermarket items necessary to equip the vehicles authorized for their intended purposes, including vehicle rehabilitation, training, and inspection as needed by the Department of Public Works. Ordinance 1351-2025 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the procurement by one or more requirement contracts of the rental of large-capacity trucks with operators for the Division of Streets, Department of Public Works, for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Public Works.
Thank you. First reading emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 1312-2025 by Councilmember Kelly, authorizing the issuance of a mobile permit to Rhonda Dozier to engage in mobile vending in Ward 11. Ordinance 1313-2025 by Councilmember Welch, consenting and approving the issuance of a permit for the Cleveland Cocoa Run, February 7, 2026, managed by Hermes Sports and Events. Ordinance 1319-2025 by Councilmember Casey, authorizing the Director of Department of Aging to enter into agreement with Senior Transportation Connection for the Senior Transportation Open House and Resource Fair for the public purpose of providing an opportunity to connect with city services as well as increase awareness of available transportation options to Cleveland residents through the use of Ward 16 Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 1323-2025 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request, approving the collective bargaining agreement with Utilities Worker Union of America, AFL-CIO Local 270, and to amend Section 12 of Ordinance 194-2021 relating to compensation for various classifications.
Thank you. Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Spencer, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember Polencik.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polencik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 16 yays.
Call to roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polencik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 16 yays.
Thank you. First reading emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 1314-2025 by Councilmember Starr, objecting to the transfer of location of a D5 liquor permit to 1105 Carnegie Avenue. Resolution 1320-2025 by Councilmember Conwell, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a D2, D2X, D3 liquor permit to 500 West St. Clair Avenue. Resolution 1324-2025 by Councilmembers Harsh, Moore, Welch, Polencik, Kelly, Casey, and Santana, supporting the students and station members working to regain access to 89.3 FM radio frequency, and urging Cleveland State University to fully restore WCSB radio to its students.
Hold on, Madam Clerk, I think Councilman Harsh would like a point on that. Councilman Harrison would like to be added as well. Councilman Starr would like to be added with any other council members. Any objection with all of council being added to this resolution? Any objection with all of council being added to this resolution? Please add all council members to this resolution. Thank you.
So noted.
And thank you, Councilman Harsh. Councilman Harsh has been texting and calling me every day about this, and finally we got the action that he was looking for. Thank you, Council. Go ahead, Council, I mean, Madam Clerk. Is she done? Okay. Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Spencer, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember Polencik.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polencik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 16 yays.
Thank you. Call to roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polencik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 16 yays.
Thank you. Second reading emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 1083-2025 by Councilmember Starr, designating former Cleveland Fire Department Engine Company 26 Station House as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1084-2025 by Councilmember Spencer, designating the Tamir Rice Butterfly Memorial as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1223-2025 as amended by Councilmembers Harrison and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the mayor and the commissioner of purchases and supplies to sell city-owned property no longer needed for the city's public use located on East 90th Street to ortho school properties or its designee for purposes of developing a hotel.
Thank you. Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Spencer, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember Polencik.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polencik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 16 yays.
Call to roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop Conwell, Gray, Harrison, Harsh, House Jones, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, Polencik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr, Welch. 16 yays.
Thank you. We will now move to introductions, and I want to make a special introduction and also a special acknowledgement. And first of all, I want to commend Ms. Rice. Where did she go? Samira Rice. I want to commend Samira Rice. Ms. Rice has been working tirelessly for the last 11 years to make sure that this community never forgets the tragedy that happened with her son. And I wanted to take a moment to congratulate you because I've met with you personally. I, in my former position, was there that night. And as you know, you and I had met and, you know, had had some tough times, but also have had some great times. But today, I want to acknowledge you and the community for standing behind you to have that Butterfly Memorial. Thank you so much. You know, people don't realize this because you get yelled at a lot in this city, and a lot of people that come to these mics sometimes don't have pleasant things to say. But I love this city, and I love the people of this city. And this young lady has always fought for this community. So I just wanted to give you that special acknowledgement from council and all of us. We really appreciate your tenacity and really making that happen. And I also want to give a special shout out. I had an opportunity to go to church yesterday. I do go to church, y'all, once in a while. After dealing with this job, you better. I had to get prayed up for today. But my good friend, another friend who I met, unfortunately, through a tragedy 19 years ago, when her son was unfortunately, you know, he was shot by a police officer, Angelo Miller. And my good friend Alicia Kirkman reached out to me. She has a church across the street from my house, asked me to worship. And low and behold, I look at the road behind me, and I see my future colleague, Nikki Hudson, actually in there worshiping as well. So I want to acknowledge Nikki Hudson. Nikki is unopposed. She's going to be joining us next year. If you could please stand. Now, we're going to warn you, Nikki. It's great to be an activist. All of us started out as activists. Now you're learning the politics, building collaborative leadership models. But the hardest part of this is when you actually want to have to govern. And we're going to all be here to support you and help you. This body is a family. I know we get bad press sometimes, but this body really is here to embrace you. And you've got big shoes to fill. Jenny Spencer is an outstanding woman. But we're looking forward to working with you, okay? Thank you. All right. Are there any other introductions? Any other introductions? Any other introductions? Seeing no other introductions? Are there any announcements? Any announcements? Seeing no other announcements? Is there any miscellaneous? Councilman Kevin Conwell and then Councilwoman?
This Saturday, matter of fact, I want to do some recruitment while we do this gig at our Glenville Library. My band will be kicking it, Coffee with the Cop, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. And I would love for the police officers to come over there to recruit as well. We'll probably have at least 50 to 60 people there, and we'll be kicking it at Glenville Library located at 11900 St. Clair Avenue, the home of the mighty, 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 mighty top letters. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe next I have Councilwoman Spencer.
Thank you, Council President. I am echoing your comments and regard and accolades for Ms. Samaria Rice. This is a big night. Thank you to all colleagues for supporting the passage of 1084-2025, which designates the Tamir Rice Butterfly Memorial as a Cleveland landmark. And this is really, to me, a testament, Ms. Rice, to you and your sustained leadership through unspeakable loss and tragedy you have for so long continued to lead us. And the memorial, for those who haven't had a chance to visit it, is an extraordinary place. It is a place of reflection and beauty. And the community has already provided a lot of love and caretaking for it. But this landmark designation is really important, and it says that it's a sacred place for all of us. So I also want to acknowledge Ms. Molly Negan, who was there from the beginning when the Butterfly Memorial idea first emerged.
Is Molly here?
She's here.
Stand up, Molly. I didn't see Molly back there. Molly. Outstanding job.
But also, you know, this process of becoming a landmark, as you said, Council President, it's about, there's governing here. And so this was a bureaucratic process. And two women, Ms. Samaria Rice and Ms. Nikki Hudson, came down to City Hall, not once, not twice, but three times, to provide a beautiful presentation on the legacy of the memorial. So thank you to both of you for coming to Planning Commission, Landmarks Commission, and DPS Committee. And I know Chairman Harrison, that your support at committee meant a tremendous amount to all of us. And Council President, I do want to ask for a few members, in particular, but any member who would wish to join, to please, if we can do a photo at the conclusion of tonight's meeting here in the well with Ms. Rice. I know we'd like to have the DPS members there. We'd like to have Chairman Harrison, Councilmember Marsh, Welch. I know Councilwoman House Jones is not available, Councilwoman Santana, Councilman Harsh, and again, any other member who wishes to join. But we would welcome and invite you and love to have you down to be together to commemorate this special moment tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. So directly after council meeting, if we can make sure we open up the well, invite Ms. Rice here. Molly and Nikki, if you guys want to join us, or whoever from the community wants to join us, we can have it right here because then we can have a couple of layers, if you don't mind. Okay? Thank you. Councilwoman Welsh.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you to Councilman Chris Harsh for his advocacy in organizing and mobilizing individuals together on behalf of the students at CSU. And I know that there isn't anyone here present from Idea Stream or CSU, so I'm hoping that I'm able to, I'm praying that I'll be able to be as clear as possible. I mean, I was going to sit here and talk about how I used to be, oddly enough, in an emo band. I'm a musician. I listened to college radio on my way to Garrett Morgan. Shout out to CMSD. And I was actually a part of college radio when I was at Whittenburg University. But none of that really matters. What really matters, I believe, is that at one point in time, we were all students. And we like to hold a lot of press conferences and issue statements and build a lot of campaigns around students. But the moment that those students grow up and they're unable to pose for photo ops because they're unsure of what political climate they're about to take photos for, as soon as they speak up, as soon as they stop performing the gratitude that we expect from them, our care somehow seems to diminish. And when they start questioning systems that claim to serve them, and we call them ungrateful, which we see is continuously happening with our CSU students. And when they point out injustices, we call them angry. And when they demand better, we tell them they need to wait. And so we praise students' potential, but then we punish their power. And so the students of CSU, these are students that are in our classrooms, in our neighborhoods, in our cities. And then the very people, they're the very people who are going to be investing in our neighborhoods when we're not here anymore. They're those very people who are going to send these seats. In fact, there are a ton of CSU graduates here. And there is a lot of people in decision-making seats, in boardrooms, in C-suite positions, who talk about the community as if it's an abstract concept and not a living body made up of students that they once were. And so I love our public institutions. I'm a product of our public institutions, and I fight for them every day. But I'm very clear-eyed about this Idea Stream and CSU issue, that too many of the people charged with leading them care about protecting their titles and their seats than protecting students. with leading them care about protecting their titles and their seats than protecting students' future. And when is enough enough? When do we start asking ourselves whether decisions we make are something our students would be proud of? Would the decisions their children in their homes be proud of this decision? And so because these students are stripped of their professional development, I have to ask, would their children want to be stripped of those same professional development opportunities? I stand by the students at CSU. I stand by WCSB, and in the words of American Rejects, "I hope when they all see those students on campus and off campus, that they give us hell, that they give them hell," because they're demanding a world that values their minds and their futures, as we say we do, and they're reminding us that they hold not just spending power in this city or in these institutions, but power in our democracy, and they deserve to be heard and to have the same opportunities as students as any of our other neighboring institutions. And so I hope IdeaStream and CSU will see that, and for the sake of every student who's ever believed this city could be home, I hope we believe that also.
Thank you. And last but not least, Chris Harsh, who has been advocating for this furiously over the last couple of weeks, give him the opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilwoman Welch, for those very clear words. Just real quick so that everybody understands, this issue has touched every single ward in Cleveland. It has touched thousands of our constituents. We now have over 260 public comments on our website, which is more comments on this issue than any issue in the history of public comments in Cleveland, and that's all just happened in the last couple of days. I'm going to read one of them. I won't read 260. I know that out of respect for Alan Dreyer, he didn't like us when we went on long rants, so I'll try to sum this up, but I think this one sums it up the best. This young lady writes, "As an alumnus of Cleveland State University and a longtime WCSB listener, I wanted to share how deeply this station has impacted my life and the broader Cleveland community. WCSB introduced me to Cleveland's vibrant local music scene, something that has become one of the most meaningful parts of my life. The station kept me informed about local events and concerts, and through its free events and ticket giveaways, made it possible for me to stay connected to the community even during times of financial hardship. Cleveland deserves an outlet that allows its residents to explore music and the creative communities that surround it. Music is healing and powerful, and WCSB's accessible, community-driven programming has long served as a cornerstone of Cleveland's cultural and economic vitality. The recent takeover and CSU's decision to dismantle such a culturally significant and diverse institution is devastating. WCSB has always been one of the things that makes Cleveland truly great." That was written by Leanne Penya Garcia just yesterday, and I think she nailed it. This is a cultural institution. This is about who we are as an identity, as a city, and I just don't think that Dr. Laura Bloomberg and Kevin Martin understood that when they made this decision behind closed doors. However, the good news is that all agreements between two parties can be amended if both parties want to amend the agreement, and both Dr. Laura Bloomberg and Mr. Martin can come to the table and amend this to bring the students back into the agreement between IdeaStream and CSU. To that end, the WCSB Annual Halloween Ball will be this Saturday, October 25, at the Beachland. It is free. Everybody can come by if you haven't had a chance to hang out and meet some of these young folks and some of the older folks and learn why this is such a beloved community. The WCSB community is built to last. They're here to stay, and Dr. Bloomberg and Martin should come to the table and talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Michael Palensik.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, and I want to thank Chris and every, my colleagues, for joining in on this. And again, I would ask respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I've been playing phone tag with Dr. Bloomberg. IdeaStream contacted me, but you know who's really reached out to me is the ethnic stations. You have no idea how many people listen to those ethnic stations. And not only that, but the council general, the council general, Republic of Slovenia, contacted me. This is a diplomat contacted me about her concerns as to what took place here as well. So, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask, I think the only way we're going to get them in a room is by you calling both of them and saying, "Get over here. Sit down in our conference room, and let's figure out what transpired here." I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I will give her a call. I will give her a call. Councilman Kevin Conwell?
Thank you very much. You know, this is jazz station. They mentioned the Jazz Neo, and I am, matter of fact, I'm an accomplished jazz musician. Giggled out a lot of different places, and I was gigging out Saturday. Matter of fact, it was breakfast for Martini Porre Center, and I talked with a lot of my buddies, Smitty and L.R. Smith, and who else was gigging there with us? Booker, Andre Nae, and I told them what CSU did, and they really, really, really harshed. They didn't dig that because that's not really cool, because to develop jazz and develop swing, we cultivate young people, and we cultivate young people a lot. When I'm gigging out and I see a young man over there and he needs some drumsticks or whatever the case may be, I bring him up to play my drums, and that's how you cultivate to work with young people. You remember two months ago, you weren't here, the jazz lady, I mean jazz man, Santana, was at your spot, chairing Council President, and remember we had the young jazz group that was up here kicking it, and I sit back, "Yeah, you remember that, Harsh?" Because that's our job, is develop young people, because that's how you make it swing. But for IdeaStream, they didn't understand the mixture. To kick the students out, it don't mean a thing if it ain't got that swing. So you got to include them into the mixture of the mix so that they can continue to push the arts and the jazz and the music. So Jazz Neo, it would never swing unless you bring them into the mix. So I'm disappointed, a lot of the jazz cats in the city, they're talking about it because they did it the wrong way. You got to bring the students in. You have to talk with them. You have to cultivate the young people, just like you just said, Council Lady, because you're an artist as well, as well as Chris Harsh. Sometimes we jam in my room also. I mean, upstairs in my office. You got it. Yeah, that's why, yeah, you hear the music above your head, but you got to bring, you got to bring them in, and I was extremely disappointed when you mentioned that to me, and we met on Friday, you, Councilmember Mike Palensik, and I think Maury was there also in that back room. I don't like that at all. That's not how you do jazz. So IdeaStream, that's the wrong way doing it. I'll let all the jazz cats know, and we shouldn't listen to the radio station. Thank you very, very much. And you need to call the meeting, Council President, so we can kick it with them. And I always say this, you got to walk it like you talk it, or you lose that beat, and they lost the beat. Peace.
I believe that is all. Is Councilwoman Welch, did you have a mic up or you're done? Okay. Starr, Councilman Richard Starr?
How you doing, Council President? I'll try to be real brief and then get straight to the facts. I know I asked for a little bit of time, but I just want to understand that the faking has to stop. Over the past few months, since we had to come up with this redistricting, we got people just fronting and lying and acting like they're not the root causes of how some of these maps are. People who ain't even qualified to walk in the neighborhood that I grew up in. People who ain't never, ever had to buy grocery stores from a gas station. People want to talk about new this, new that, they don't even know nothing. Not a thing. But at the end of the day, when I was asked a question about the National Guards, I said, "Let me have an open mind and look at the pros and cons." Here's why. From 2019 to 2024, there was 953 homicides in the city of Cleveland. Eight hundred twenty-five of those individuals was black folks. Eighty-six percent of a death rate. People who ain't qualified to talk about they want to represent War Five don't even understand what that looks like. What I mean by that is I've buried children since 2008 in this city, and we have not created a comprehensive safety plan. So when you talk about any way to bring safety, and you said, "Let's have an open mind," people want to take that and email that out. People want to take that and say, "You're part of the old boys' club." But let me tell you about this old boys' club that you quote-unquote label me as in order for your political gain. This old boys' club that you label me as is the reason why we got $600,000 a Neighborhood Equity Fund back-to-back years for advocating with the Council President. This good old boys' club were the ones who voted to make sure we had $20 million so we could talk about getting back to the basics, when we talk about recreation, so we talk about getting the funding and the programs that we need. This good old boys' crew was the one who said, "Let's lobby and advocate to get additional dollars for Cleveland Muni League football team because our kids need it." The good old boys' crew is the one that stand on business meanwhile other people stand on being privileged. And let me understand this, no matter what you want to talk about elections, but we know some people been here lying, sharing information, not being a team player for this body to get the work done. So at the end of the day, we gonna stop all this kidding around because you're not qualified to speak on nothing from the neighborhood I grew up in, the neighborhood I've been able to represent it as elected official, so we gonna stop these fake emails like you doing something because you're not. At the end of the day, we talk about a land safe ordinance that people say they got championed to get here on council, and the last three and a half years, they have not did nothing to ensure that land safe issues was addressed in poor, impoverished neighborhoods like War Five, but they want to represent the War Five. They want to talk about the maps of how they was created. Well, let's talk about the facts. They was told by other council members and was given the opportunity where the Council President drew a map for them to represent downtown, and they screamed and said, "You cut my neighborhood up like a carved turkey." Man, War Five, South Village neighborhood, over there has been represented by more council members because of the low population, not because you didn't get the old Brooklyn Park where you had your base at. So let's stop all this kidding around talking about what you gonna do for War Five because you're not qualified, you have never understood War Five, and you won't understand this new War Five. So let me make sure you understand, I'm born, raised in Cleveland, a graduate of Cleveland Metropolitan School District. I've been living here my entire life, no I didn't get moved here, and in the words of the great Frank Jackson, "You ain't raised nothing, you ain't gonna do nothing."
I believe that is the end of public comment. I do want to make sure that everybody recognize the next steps. Thanks, everybody, for being there today for a rigorous conversation around the stadium deal. We are going to be very engaged over the next few weeks. I really encourage everybody to really lean into this big time. Once again, come over here to take a picture with Ms. Rice. Council is adjourned. Okay. Excuse the absences.
Okay. By Councilmember Spencer, that the absence of Councilmember House Jones is hereby excused, seconded by Councilmember Palensik.
This council is adjourned to the call of the chair. The next meeting of council will be on October 27, 2025.